All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors for Thursday, February 21st, 2019. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. McKee, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of our United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would everyone please remain standing for one moment as we remember those who are protecting us both home and overseas? Thank you. Okay, we're working. All right, so before we get into announcements, I think we're going to kick off right with our first presentation. And if we switch the camera for the viewers at home, we have a sea of Kelly Green in our audience today with some really sweet jackets that I think we should get some. There they are. We are joined this evening by the Warminster's Warminster Pioneer's 90-pound football team and cheer squad, so I'd like to welcome you all to the meeting. And also, if everybody, I don't know if we have a camera that can zoom in on that huge trophy sitting on the table there, but apparently the Warminster Pioneer's 90-pound football team and cheer squad had a very successful season. And the president of Warminster Pioneer's Football.
Jason.
Guys, come on up here. If you would, before I read the proclamation, could you speak a little bit about, introduce yourselves to the audience at home and speak a little bit about the team and the season they had?
Sure. Hi, I'm Fred Reichwein, Jr., and our team this year accomplished something that I've been coaching for a number of years, and it speaks volume of their character, their discipline, and as well as their dedication to their sport and the hard work that they've put in. We wound up going 11-0, which in itself is a pretty awesome feat, and in that 11-0, we scored over 300 points and only gave up 18 total for the entire year, including...
Woo!
Not only is it a testament to the boys, but we have to also thank all the parents as coaches the boys should be very proud of, and as a coach and the rest of my coaching staff, we appreciate this, as well as the boys, the parents, and all that you accomplished this year. And from us to you, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Reichwein. I am the Warminster Pioneer's president. I am super proud of all these boys and girls, and of course, the coaches for working so hard. This is a 100% volunteer program. Nobody gets paid here. We are all here for these kids right here that you see, and the rest that aren't here today that are working hard for the next title. So, thank you, boys and girls, for always supporting the boys, and thank you for the coaches. You guys have worked so hard this year, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Guys, come up here with the team captains and then just fill in around them and all the game captains. Come on, come on. Go on up, we'll get in the back here.
I want to do something now. All right, are we on here? Okay. So, we'd like to now take this moment to recognize the team. So here's our proclamation from the Board of Supervisors. Whereas during the 2018 football season, the Warminster Pioneer's 90-pound football team consistently performed at an outstanding level, and hard work and confidence were displayed in their accomplishments. And whereas after finishing their season undefeated, 11-0 in their division, and making the playoffs, the Warminster's Pioneer's 90-pound football team filled Warminster Township with pride when they won the Keystone State Football League Freedom Conference Championship. And whereas we, the Board of Supervisors of Warminster Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, recognize these outstanding achievements of the Warminster Pioneer's 90-pound football team. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors, on this 21st day of February 2019, honor the success of the Warminster Pioneer 90-pound football team. Congratulations.
We are proud of you, say we are proud of you.
Good job, cheer squad, good job. All right. What we're going to do is we're going to take a little recess right now so we can take pictures with all the guys and girls, and with the trophy and everything, so let's take a quick recess to take some pictures. Thank you. All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order, and we will start now with announcements. Before we do that, I'd like to just kick it over to Mr. Bartle to discuss the executive session we just had.
Yes, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the board met an executive session this evening beginning at 6:00 PM in a room adjacent to this one. The board discussed two matters, one a personnel matter, the other a potential matter of litigation. Both of those matters are legitimate subjects of executive session pursuant to Pennsylvania sunshine law.
Thank you, sir. Okay, move into our announcements now. Ms. Frescatore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some announcements on behalf of our Parks and Recreation Department. Discount tickets are available now. Regal movie tickets, ski lift tickets, flower show tickets are all available for various local mountains for the ski lift tickets. Tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Park and Recreation Office in a Warminster Community Park. Check online for ticket prices or call the office. 2019 annual dog licenses and bark park membership are available for sale in the Warminster Community Park. Wine and cheese designer bag bingo is sold out. No tickets will be sold at the door. The next event we have is the Friends of Warminster Parks Casino Night. That's Saturday, March 23rd, at Ann's Choice. We'll continue to sell tickets and accept sponsorships throughout the next month. $35 ticket includes beef and beer, $50 in chips, gaming table raffles, and silent auction items. And the dealers are very, very helpful to anybody that's new that doesn't know what they're doing, like somebody like me. So, new this year, the opportunity to be on some once-in-a-lifetime trips, California wine country, Alaskan cruise, and safari in Africa and more. Don't forget to register early on any of these programs, listen to the Township Newsletter or online. For more information or register, Parks and Recreation Office, (215) 443-5428, or visit the website, wwwwarminister township.org. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatore. Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to send along my condolences, and I'm sure the condolences on behalf of the board administration to the Salzburg family. Ray Salzburg recently passed. Barbara was a longtime Warminster employee, and long after she left the employ here, she was always involved in Warminster Day and our Memorial Day Parade. So, our condolences go out on Ray's passing, and Ray, if you're watching us up there, please send Bryce Harper our way. Ray was a huge, huge Phillies fan, and every year they would take a trip, and I would see him on TV. In fact, I said I saw you on TV again, so our condolences to the family. The only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is I really want to thank our good friend, Joe Cowie. Once again, Joe Cowie of Cowie Shopright here in Warminster has come up huge for the township. He's graciously volunteered to be the main sponsor for Warminster Day again this year, and he's actually kicked it up a notch with a bigger contribution and some more giveaways and things, and he is, Joe's all about community. He is, and once again, he's just stepped up to the plate tremendously, so I want to thank the Joe Cowie and the Cowie family, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one announcement, and that's to remind everyone, if you have any unwanted or unused prescription medications, you can safely get rid of them over at the Warminster Police Station. It's the green box at the top of the steps. Last month, we took back about 50 pounds of our prescription medications. I like to see that number jump to maybe 60 or 70 pounds, but the reason why it is so important, we've talked about this before, that bring back your prescription medications is because the experts tell us that the majority of people who abuse heroin start off by abusing prescription painkillers. So, tell your family, tell your friends to utilize the prescription drop-off box we have over at the police station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I just have two quick announcements. The first one is that Mr. Monroe cannot be with us this evening. He had to travel outside the area to attend a funeral, so our thoughts are with him and his family, and he should be back in business with us next month. Just want to take a moment to recognize and welcome the new businesses that have come to town last month. McGriff Insurance Services at 320 West Street Road, and JLC Construction at 375 Ivy Lane Road, Suite 1. We thank them for choosing Warminster to call home and with some best of luck in their business here. With that, we will move into our, back into our agenda with our presentations. Up now are previous board and committee members certificates of appreciation. The first one I'd like to introduce is a gentleman who's here with us right now and is no stranger to the township or to service this community, and I would like to ask Mr. Tom Thurn to come up. I know I speak for the entire board, all the administration, when we say that this is just about a small token of our appreciation for everything you've done for us, and this is in recognition of the four years of dedication and service on the Economic Development Committee, something that you helped shepherd back into existence here, and I really wanted to say thank you, and that we appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And Tom's not going away, he's now an alternate on the zoning hearing board.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
I believe that Tom was our only one that was here today, so I'd like to read off the names of the other honorees, and we will deliver their certificates. Joe Burnert also served four years on the Economic Development Committee. Former supervisor Richard Luce served four years on the Economic Development Committee. Siobhan Young served a year on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Joseph Danig served four years on the zoning hearing board. Bernadette Rapiski served five years on the Planning Commission. Frederick Haas served five years on the Warminster Municipal Authority Board. Richard Ludwig served seven years on the Golf Committee, and Anna Peake served three years on the Library Board. Now, I appreciate all of their service, whether it was a year or seven years, everybody who takes any time out of their calendar to help this community is somebody who is worthy of our thanks and appreciation. But I must take a moment to recognize Ms. Mary Jane Courtwright, who is a member of our Library Board, an original member of our Library Board, and her tenure was 54 years as a Library Board, and she recently stepped down. We will be doing something for Ms. Courtwright at a later date and at whatever suits her best, but that kind of devotion is what Warminster was built on, and I appreciate everyone I know speak for the rest of the board when I say thank you to all these individuals for their service, so. Anything you, anybody like to add? All right, thank you. We'll now move on to the next part of our agenda, that's the land use matters, public hearings, and ordinances. First up is a conditional use hearing on the fugue. For that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Bartle.
I think this evening, my understanding is that the applicant has requested a continuance with respect to that matter, and we received the appropriate letter giving us the extension of time pursuant to Pennsylvania law. So that matter, while it is open at this time, and we will accept into evidence the following things, which are the application as Board Exhibit 1, we'll accept as Board Exhibit 2, the proof of publication, that being the proof of the fact that the matter was appropriately advertised, and 3, the plan that was submitted as the conditional use plan. We'll accept those three things and then close the hearing till a further date, and do we have a further date in time?
March 21st.
All right, so this matter is then continued to March 21st, 2019, at 7:00 PM at this location. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, our next item on the agenda is the land development review of 710 Newtown Road, three-lot subdivision. I would also like to turn the floor over to Mr. Bartle.
Yes, thank you. This is a matter where the applicant is Chi Hadda Contracting LLC for property located at 710 Newtown Road. The matter before the board is a conditional preliminary and final major subdivision approval. By this approval, the board is granting the conditional preliminary final approval of its major subdivision application to subdivide the approximately 1.457 acre property located at 710 Newtown Road within the township's R2 Residential District and Historic Overlay Zoning Districts into three lots. Lot number one will consist of 21,624 square feet. Lot number two, 23,370 square feet, and lot number three will consist of 18,472 square feet. The applicant will comply with all of the township review letters, which include the Township Planner Review Letter, the Township Engineer Review Letter, the Zoning Officer Review Letter, and the County Planning Commission Recommendation, and the Township's Planning Commission Letter. The, there are additional conditions with respect to the application, and then there are seven waivers, all of which have been, all of which have received no objection by any of the township consultants, and all of which have been determined by the staff to be appropriate to grant. Those waivers have to do with things from the approval being held as a preliminary and final approval as opposed to separating them, down to a waiver being requested from providing curbing. So there's an issue regarding curbing, an issue with regarding sidewalk, an issue with regarding buffering, another one, a waiver requested from the planting of street trees, a waiver requested from the widening of Newtown Road, a waiver being requested from providing existing features within 400 feet of the subject property, and again, the one that I mentioned requesting that this be a preliminary and final approval rather than one or the other. There are various conditions in paragraph 2 regarding the property's three lots that the applicant must comply with, and this resolution has to be signed by the applicant within 10 days, or it will be denied for denial of all of the waivers that are set forth in the resolution. So at this time, it's an approval, and the applicant has 10 days to sign and accept all of the conditions of the approval.
Come on, come on up, if you would please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, please.
Sir.
Is that one on?
Nick Rose is on.
I do not, is it on?
Two switches on the side, Nick, check them out.
Yeah, we're going to check right now. It's not on. Little button right on the top of it, if you look, right there. There you go.
Hello?
There you go.
That's better. All right. Nick Rose, Protract Engineering. I'm actually here on behalf of John Chi Hadda. He could not be here this evening due to an illness, actually. He was here at the Planning Commission. Mr. Bartle has added, obviously summarized what's happening here. It is just a subdivision on Newtown Road, just a little northeast of Street Road. It's three lots that are actually oversized for this district, for the R2 district. So, Mr. Chi Hadda has told me he has no problem with the resolution, and he will certainly sign that within the required 10 days. If I get any more information on it, I can sort of run through it, but it's just the three lots, one existing dwelling, and two would contain proposed dwellings in the future. We have to submit plans to be reviewed by your engineer, which we know that will be noted on the plans. So with that, I could give you more information, but that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there any questions for Mr. Rose?
I have a question. May I ask why you're asking for the waivers for the sidewalks and curbing?
Yes, that was dealt with extensively at the Planning Commission meeting. I was not personally there, but I do know what was discussed there, the historic nature of the area, and I believe there are several towns in the area that are closer to the road than would be allowed by this district, so it doesn't appear that why they would be extended for that length. So in this case, we are requesting waivers to match the historic district.
Is that going to fit in, Frank, or Karen, with the other sidewalks that we've added?
Sure, so this property is the first one along Newtown Road that doesn't have any curb or sidewalk along it from Street Road up until this property, which is a good length from Street Road. And then the other properties beyond this, down towards the park and the pad site property, do have curb and sidewalk, but they are not part of the historic area, they're more modern properties. So this would be in keeping with the historic area because it matches the fact that there is no curb and sidewalk along Newtown Road.
And the staff supports this waiver?
Yes.
I have another question. Thank you, Mr. Rose. Thank you.
I just have a comment that I would ask that during this land development, if approved, that the contractors and developers be mindful of the neighbors. I understand that some trees were taken down off of that property, and the trucks were driven onto a brand-new driveway across the street with no knock on the door, "Hey, you mind if we use your driveway?" They really need to be courteous to the neighborhood, the neighbors and the neighborhood, because it is a tight squeeze.
Okay, I may be a note of that, thank you.
Okay, before we open it up to any public questions or comments, let's see if we can craft a motion. Mr. Bartle, would you do the honors?
Yes, the motion should be that move that the Resolution Number 2019-11 for conditional preliminary final major subdivision approval be accepted as presented.
Okay. Do we, does anybody make that motion?
Yes, I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any further supervisor question or comment before we open to the public? Seeing none in the public, any question or comment on this? Please, if you could come up and just state your name and address, please.
She can come to the podium.
She can come to the podium, you can stay at the table, Mr. Rose.
Good evening, I'm Pam Kitzler. I live on Centennial Road, the way from you, and my question is that, and it may be there that I can't see it. What plan is there for water, mainly drainage, which is, we're going from one piece of impervious property to now three, and over the last number of years, we have had persistent problems. The last two developments may have helped the end of my street, but they haven't helped me, which I will speak to later, but when does that get addressed? Who looks at that?
Sure, so there's no proposed improvements at this time. This project is just to subdivide the lots. When they would come in to develop the lots or put any new impervious in the lots, they will have to submit a plan to the township that our office will review as the township engineer. Well, they'll have to submit a plan meeting the township's Stormwater Ordinance, so we'll review it at the time that they would propose the improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment or question? Well, luckily, she's an engineer. There we go. Back in business.
I just want to clarify, Ms. McNair, so the stormwater problem that the resident just raised, the question for, so that is something that will be looked at as it's developed, and if there's any issues, correct?
Yes, anytime that they would have to do development, they'll have to meet the township ordinances regarding stormwater management, so it will be looked at at the time of development.
Thank you.
All right, so no further discussion. I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries for all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item C under land use matters is the land development at 813 East County Line Road. That's proposed Wendy's. For that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Bartle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is Resolution Number 2019-12. This is for an applicant County View Properties LP for property located at 813 East County Line Road. This is a conditional amended preliminary final land development approval. It is to construct a 2,619 square feet Wendy's restaurant with a drive-through facility on approximately 2.03 acre property located along the northern side of East County Line Road between the intersections of Pine Horse and Davisville Roads. It's within the township's C1 Commercial District. The project and its associated improvements are an amendment to this board's February 12, 2009 County View Properties LP mixed-use preliminary final land development approval. And as I understand it, there is substantially less land development taking place with regard to the amendment than there was with the original approval. The applicant will comply with a number of conditions that are set forth in the resolution, including the recommendation letters of the County Planning Commission, the Township Land Planner Letter, the Township Engineering Letter, the Township Zoning Officer Letter, the Township's Emergency Management and Services Letter, and the Township Planning Commission Recommendation. In addition to that, the applicant will comply with the zoning hearing board's November 28, 2018 decision and order, which is indexed as 18-32. Again, this has the same provision, giving the applicant 10 days to accept the approval as granted, or a denial will take place as set forth in the resolution. I see that the applicant is represented this evening by Joe Coles, and Joe, if you please come forward and make any statement that you think is necessary on behalf of your client.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Bartle.
Thank you.
As Mr. Bartle mentioned, my name's Joe Coles. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, County View Properties LP. We are requesting, as was stated, an amended preliminary final land development approval, and the reason that it's amended is that this pad site was lot three of a larger overall development that was approved by this board back in 2009, as was stated by Mr. Bartle. Most of that project has been built out at this point. What had been lot one exists today as a PNC bank. What had been lot two exists today as a CVS pharmacy. This is lot three, which is still vacant. Lot four is today a 78-unit townhome community, which I believe is called Whispering Pines.
Correct.
So this is the only remaining parcel that still needs to be developed. It does represent, as amended, a reduction in intensity versus what had been approved by this board back in 2009. What had originally been approved was a 10,200-square-foot commercial building of specifically unspecified use that has since become a Wendy's of about 2,600 square feet. That also represents a reduction in impervious surface coverage of about 3,800 square feet. I don't know exactly what the percentages are, but it's 3,800 square foot of impervious surface, which is now going to remain in its natural state. We are in receipt of all the review letters from your staff and from your consultants, which were recited by Mr. Bartle. We're in agreement with all the concerns and conditions set forth in those letters, and in fact, we've already... And in fact, we've already signed the resolution and returned it to Ms. Zimmerman, accepting the conditions. There is no waiver letter because, and I've been waiting to say this for 27 years of a land use practice, so it's coming, right? Wait for it. The applicant is requesting no waivers.
That's rare.
That felt good.
That's rare and unusual.
So we're requesting that the board approve the resolution for the amended land development. And I have with me this evening Mr. Ron Kloss from Bowler Engineering to answer any questions you may have about the actual development.
All right. I'll open it up to the board. Any questions for the applicant?
Looks like they covered all their bases.
Yeah. The only comment that I had is I'm amazed that that pad sat this long because the traffic is steady through there, you know. But I, for one, I'm glad to see that something come in and jobs along with it, so.
It's a good spot, too, for Wendy's.
Yeah.
Is it too soon to talk about the hours of operation?
Yes. No, certainly not too soon to talk about the hours of operation. Let me just also point out that, as Mr. Bartle stated, we did go to your zoning hearing board. There was zoning hearing board relief that was necessary. It was sort of an odd circumstance because your zoning officer took the position that it was the old ordinance that was applicable to this parcel, given that it had been primarily developed under the old ordinance. So we asked for a drive-through by variance where a drive-through would have been permitted under the current ordinance. So it was very odd. But while we were there, we discussed hours of operation. I don't think they were specifically a condition of the zoning hearing board approval, but we have with us Mr. Chad Adams and Mr. Anthony Romeo. Chad is from Wendy's and Anthony is from the franchise holder who will actually be operating the Wendy's. Gentlemen, do you know what the hours of operation will be?
Come on up.
Good evening. Typically, the hours of operations run from 10:00 AM to either 1:00 or 2:00 AM, depending on what the area will support. Kind of get a feel for it once we get in there and start operating. Certainly don't want to stay opening later than we have to if there's no business there. But right now, we're kind of leaving it open-ended. I know the Wawa is open 24 hours, I believe. There's a couple other businesses in that area that are also 24 hours. We don't serve breakfast, so we're not open, you know, before 10 o'clock. And so we're just gonna kind of work things out once we get in there.
Great. Happy to have you.
There's a provision here, in a finding of fact, in the zoning hearing board decision, number 27, that says Mr. Adams testified that the dining room hours would be 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM and that the drive-through hours would extend to midnight or 1:00 AM. Wendy's does not serve breakfast.
That's correct. The dining room will shut before the drive-through service does.
Great.
Thank you for making me look at.
The positioning of the trash dumpster, where that would be, I guess, the fact of the...
In the upper left-hand corner, right there, where the cursor is circling, it'll be completely enclosed, it'll be masonry, and there is between, in the green space, between the service aisle in the back and the actual drive-through aisle, there's a six-foot-high fence that's gonna be continuous through there, except for the one break where you have the walkway going through there.
Okay. And in terms of traffic flow, there's no issues?
None.
Great. All right. Thank you.
All right. Before we open it up to the public, any further questions, comment from the board? Before we go to public, can we, can you please craft a motion, Mr. Bartle?
Yes. The motion would be to move to approve resolution number 2019-12, the approval of the conditional amended preliminary final land development approval as presented to the board.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further comment or question from the board? No? Any comment or question from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries four zero. Welcome to Warmester. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy to have you.
Okay. Moving on to item D under Land Use Matters, duty tow ordinance. For that, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, you had previously authorized the advertisement of a bid to go to a single duty tow hauler. Those bids were received late last year. We examined all of those bids and found them all deficient and not compliant with the specifications. So the board threw out all the bids and authorized a rebid. We went through the process again and received four bids, the highest of which was approximately $25,000. However, again, we have found that all of the bids were deficient. I believe two of them did not have the appropriate amount of insurance or documentation of such, and there was issues with surety for a couple others. So the recommendation from staff at this point is to reject all the bids that were received. We're not looking to rebid at this time. We want to go ahead and examine the bid and perhaps simplify it so we don't have this issue again. But that is our recommendation for this evening, is to reject all the bids and subsequently take no action on adopting ordinance 752, as that amendment would not be required, as there is not gonna be a change at this time.
Okay. So before we open it up for comment, can I get a motion to reject all bids?
Motion.
And the chair will second. Any discussion from the board on this matter? Any discussion or comment or question from the public on this matter? John, please.
John Preel with 674 Joseph Avenue. I understand what was, what happened. I talked to Greg. I'm on board with all that. I just want to let you know, the work and the time involved and the difference, and I think Mark would agree with me, to add these other insurances on top of it without even being awarded a contract puts a little bit of pressure on you financially. We stepped up, we did. In my case, it was an error done by the insurance agent or the person who put the cert together. Didn't add the umbrella in there. So, hey, if that's the case, that's the case. So it's more his problem than anyone else's. But to add these additional insurances and stuff to try to bid this bid and work towards it when it's not, like, the way I thought you shouldn't have done it is if you were awarded, then this stuff then kicks in. We have to put this stuff together before we even do the bid, and we're paying for insurance that necessarily we don't need. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Can I just ask, Mr. Schuster?
Sure.
Is that necessary for them, for they get the additional insurances if they're not awarded the bid?
That's actually something we are talking over with the solicitor's office right now. Since we've gone through this cycle twice, we're gonna see if we can simplify the bid and maybe make those requirements post-bid, so that you have to provide it with a certain amount of time and then go ahead and award the bid. Don't know if we can do that, but that's what we're talking over the solicitor's office right now. I would certainly like to do something like that, because I definitely don't want to go through this process a third time and come up short. So whatever we have to do to streamline this and make it happen, I think we're willing to do.
Yeah, the way that that can be handled is, we can do it that way, and we can make the bid and the specifications say exactly what they do, and that the insurance information can be submitted upon the successful bid, and it will match the following specifications. Problem is, then, if they don't match the specifications after having been awarded the bid, then their bid bond is gonna be taken by the township. So there's a penalty for that. And so you either do it in the beginning and allow them all to bid without penalty, or if they bid and then don't comply with the requirements of what they have won, then they lose and forfeit their bid bond. So that's the way that the system works. So it's sort of one way or the other, and if Greg thinks that the better way of doing it is to do it the latter way, as I've explained it, we can certainly do that, but understand those are some of the issues. That is the issue that will be faced.
That seems to be fair, too. Do you think that's gonna be, will they have enough time to be able to get the additional insurance before getting fined?
Yeah, I mean, they have to work that out with their insurance carrier to see if they can do that or not. It seems to me that everybody's made a pretty good effort to get that done. I think we have four people that are bidding on this thing, and it seems to me like they've all been able to do it. The real problem here, and I don't want to speak about any particular bidder, but the real problem here has been with the non-compliance. I think, didn't we have certain things that weren't signed and certain blanks that were left in terms of the information that was to be provided? And when you have non-compliance, the law doesn't allow this board to make another decision. We have to reject that bid. And if all four of them have those same deficiencies, then you don't have a choice. You have to reject them. And that's what we've said the last couple of times. So maybe we can do this, but with all due respect to the gentleman, and I know they're not experts in bonds and the like, and this may be the first one that some of them have done, but they have to be a little bit more careful with filling these things out or getting help from somebody to fill these things out so that they come in and the blanks are at least filled in.
Thank you, Mr. Bartle, for your explanation. Thank you.
Any further comment, please, sir?
Ed Hoffman, 801 County Line Road. Okay. Mr. McKee, you made a statement here this evening when Wendy's came up here, that welcoming them and welcoming jobs to the area. But in the meantime, while you folks are sitting here and messing around with this tow bid and everything else, okay, you have people who work for those companies and are going to lose their jobs because you only want one company in here, okay? What have these companies done to make this happen? These companies have done nothing but good for you folks. Some of these companies have been in business with you folks for over 40 years, all right? And I don't understand why all of a sudden this has to be done and why the police chief only wants one, okay? We have provided, these people have provided, but meanwhile, you're gonna say, okay, so we're gonna take one tow, and meanwhile, you're going to knock businesses out, you're gonna knock employees out. Where's the logic in this? And meanwhile, you're sitting here and welcoming new employment, new businesses, meanwhile, you're knocking out businesses and knocking out employment. How does that work? Okay? I have to sit at home every other week and hope that I have another position to work, all right? I worked for one of those towers, okay? And I'm not speaking because he asked me to speak or anything else. I'm speaking on behalf of all the towers that you currently have, which are three current, all right? And it's not fair to us. It's not fair to the employees. And I think you guys need to take that into consideration, because I don't think you heard me the last time I was up here talking about this, all right? So I think that you guys really need to consider this, all right, and try to figure out why this is happening. This shouldn't be. You shouldn't be knocking out businesses. You shouldn't be knocking out employment. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Any additional comment, questions?
Mark Denitz, 100 York Road, Warmester, Modern Autobody. I believe the disbidding situation is very unfair to the four cooperative contractors that have been doing this since the last revamp of the 14 ordinance. It was very black and white. The changes were made, and everybody was doing a successful job. I don't understand that narrowing it down, let alone the economics of it, I mean, it's bad enough taxes that you pay on the grounds to maintain the establishment we are now affording, the township. I have trucks, I have equipment, I have property that is there to serve this community, which I've done personally for well over 40 years. I can't exactly tell you how long it's been, but I think it's very unfair for you to go down to one tow. And I personally, in my wildest dreams, I don't think that one tow could possibly cover all this time, not economically. It's impossible to hire somebody 24 hours a day, 365 days a year to accomplish this feat. And I mean a feat. We have a week, and after a week, it takes us approximately maybe 10 days, maybe a month to clear out some of the insurance problems that have been dropped on us, the non-pays, the abandonment of cars. Somebody that would have this on a full-time basis would have a proverbial mess. And then to bring somebody outside to bid on this thing for money, you're already paying the expense and you're recouping your monies by the service that you perform as a free enterprise. I think this is controlling, let alone it's like, I hate to say it, but it's almost like an extortion, pay-to-play. And one company, I don't think, is gonna be able to handle it, first off, and I don't think it's fair across the board. There's another matter. You've been tagging this along since September. You didn't renew the ordinance that we worked under. Nothing's been brought forward. Now you have one week with the last guy on that list that we got from the police chief or whoever drew it up. There is no coverage after that point. What do you assume is gonna happen at that point? You're just gonna assume that we'll just go ahead and take over and just keep doing it until you come up with the right bidding? And as far as the insurance goes, I read the thing pretty thoroughly. The insurance was only supposed to be enacted after the awarding to that particular company, as well as the background checks, as well as all the information you needed. Upon award of the bid, you had to come up with those additional items, whether it be insurance or background checks, whatever it was, driving records. That's the way it was worded. Whether that was correct or not, that's the way it was worded. And I even put an addendum in my packet to let you know that you were wrong the way you had it worded. So if that was one of the deficiencies of which we still don't know, I don't know what the deficiencies are so far. So if we could have some kind of idea where we went wrong, if we went wrong, which we don't know. So it's totally up in the air. Again, what are we gonna do about the future till you decide to accept, you know, somebody's money and this pay-to-play? It's ridiculous. I've never, in all my time in this township, been treated this unfair to just throw you to the ground after you've presented a service to this township for all this time. We come at the beckoning call 24 hours a day. I think you have a gift right now with the people that are involved doing it, and you're overlooking it totally just to pay attention to one person and his wants. It's wrong. There are provisions that could be written into this one, and this could be corrected. There's follow-throughs on the department for problems that are cropping up now. I have a vehicle that's been in my yard since 9/22, and there hasn't been a word about anybody coming forward to find out what's happening with that truck. No follow-up. I have a van that was, shall I say, impounded? I still haven't got paid from it from December. There's nobody following this stuff after, if it's a police tow, to find out what's going on with it. So the looseness isn't with our towing contract. We supply upon demand, and it's done. So I think you have to take a broader look at this thing and in a fairer type of sense. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments or questions from the audience? Okay. Any further comment from the board? All right. So the motion that's currently on the table is to reject all bids. My question is, at some point, do we know what will happen with the rotation down the road?
Yeah, as far as the comment about renewing the ordinance, that's not how it works. The ordinance keeps going in perpetuity until you decide to change it. So the ordinance is in place. What we'll do is we'll just extend the rotation as we've always done in the past. I imagine that's gonna be seamless.
Okay.
Excuse me. The ordinance ran out December 31st.
No, it didn't.
Yes, it did. It ends or has to...
Please come to the podium. They can't hear you at home, Mark. Yeah. They just think Greg's talking to himself.
Which I do sometimes anyways.
The ordinance ran out December 31st.
Ordinance is...
It is renewable upon application every year annually. That's the way it reads.
Okay, you're talking about the content of the ordinance rather than the actual ordinance.
The actual service, yeah, that we apply for and get accepted to do the performance of those duties. And another thing, the insurance, we're now acting under that ordinance, which we were granted because of its correctness. Now is no good.
So are you asking us to go through the process and ask you for the $500 fee? Is that what you're asking for? We thought we were doing everyone a favor.
This is your business. This is your problem, not mine. I mean, we apply when, you know, it comes up, but we didn't do anything to extend it. So here we are, working without a contract, and physically... So here we are, working without a contract, and physically, we're not licensed under Warminster Township right now to do this towing. In a police matter or an investigation, we're in trouble. I'm not going to tell you your business, but.
All right, so you're saying that Modern doesn't feel comfortable doing this business?
Are you going to try and secularize me out of this? No.
Yes.
No. No, I'm talking as a whole. Will I still do it? Sure, because I'm a damn fool. I've been putting up with these bids foolishly for one person. It's ridiculous. How can you just throw people to the ground? I have employees. My taxes are paid by my business, which I do, towing. And so are the other establishments. You've got to examine your conscience. This is ain't right. So you have to make some kind of reparation for the extension of that ordinance or, I thought agreement between two people or people is a contract, whether it be verbal or it be a handshake or it be written. Our contract ran out December 31st. There is nothing more. We're on some kind of an extension now because somebody drew up a list, but there's nothing to back that up. And what do we do from here now? We're going to bid it again a third time? All the expense and energy we have to go through with the legalities of it to put another bid in? The bond company's going to think we're crazy.
This is something we can work through. Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. All right. So motion on the table is to reject all bids. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes 4-0. As the bids were rejected, item D2 is no longer valid?
No action is required.
No action is required. And we're going to go away and take a look at this and examine where to go. Next up, under land use matters, is item E. It is consider adoption of ordinance 754, the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code with amendments and the 2015 International Fire Code with amendments. Mr. Bartle?
Yes, thank you. As the board will call, you previously authorized the advertisement of the ordinance in question. This is ordinance number 2019-754. This ordinance adopts the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code with amendments as the Warminster Township Property Maintenance and Housing Code and the 2015 International Fire Code with amendments as the Warminster Township Fire Prevention and Life Safety Code, amending Chapter 13, Licenses, Permits, and General Business Regulations to add a new Part 10 Housing and Property Transfer Requirements. In the whereas clauses, it said that previously the board had enacted ordinance 692 and thereby the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code and 2009 International Fire Code. So effectively, you're updating the ordinance from 2009 to 2015 version of the code. And the Board of Supervisors had enacted ordinance 608, which allowed Warminster Township to opt out, excuse me, to opt in for the enforcement of all international codes except the Property Maintenance Code and Fire Code. So these are the two ones that you are left to adopt. In the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, it is hereby adopted by reference as the Warminster Township Property Maintenance and Housing Code with the following amendments and additions. And then it goes on to tailor the adoption of this particular code, which is a standard code, to Warminster Township by including all of the things that you've modified it with before and just allowing the reinstitution of all of those. And you do the same thing with regard to the other code. Let me get to that. The 2015 International Fire Code is hereby adopted by reference as the Warminster Township Fire Prevention and Life Safety Code. And again, you then make all of the modifications to that so as to comply with what you currently have in your ordinance with all of the additions that you've added over the periods of time. Then finally, Chapter 13, Part 10 of the Warminster Township Code is hereby amended to include the following new provisions, and that is the housing and property transfer requirements as the occupancy, no property that is to be used as a residential unit shall be rented, leased, sold, otherwise transferred, or occupied without first obtaining an occupancy certificate from the Department of Licenses and Inspections. And that is what the ordinance does.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Okay. So can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance 754? Is there a second?
I'll second.
No further comment from the board? Any comment or question from the public? All right. Seeing none of them, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Carries 4-0. Last, under the land use matters for this evening, is consider adoption of ordinance 755, which allows Centennial School District to utilize crossing guards. Mr. Bartle?
Yes, thank you. Again, the board will recall that you authorized the advertisement of this ordinance probably at one of the last meetings. This is ordinance number 755. It's entitled, "An Ordinance of Warminster Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, Approving the Request of Centennial School District to Assume the Hiring and Oversight of School Crossing Guards Pursuant to 53 PS 66915 Subsection C." Excuse me. That is, the request of this ordinance was made and is being adopted by virtue of the authority found in the Second Class Township Code. That perdon site is the Second Class Township Code. And it basically says that whereas the board is willing to permit the school district to assume the hiring and overseeing of school crossing guards at William Tennant High School's two driveways at 333 Centennial Road, that you allow the district to assume the hiring and overseeing of school crossing guards at the school district's facilities and functions. The school district will assume full and complete responsibility for the cost of compensation of the school crossing guards, and the township police department shall provide the training to and develop procedures for assisting the school crossing guards as necessary. There's a provision in here for training. It says the necessary training of the school crossing guards shall include, but not be limited to, developing procedures and methods for safe and orderly pedestrian and traffic control, taking into account different potential weather conditions and time of the day during which the same may occur. There shall also be developed an efficient and prompt method by which school crossing guards may request any necessary assistance from police and other emergency personnel if the need may arise. So what you've also done is provided through your police department to train these people appropriately and provide for the coordination between the school district's crossing guards and your police department. And the ordinance goes on with its standard closings, repeal and ratification, severability, related action, and the effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Bartle. I think it's great that we're protecting our children and our residents by adopting this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing Mrs. Hart back out there, because I understand she's going to be retaking her post out there on Centennial Road, and she's the best at directing traffic in front of that school, bar none.
So the school district's going to hire and pay for the crossing guards?
That's correct.
The township, the police department's going to train. How long is the training process?
You know, I don't know the issue. Do you know the issue, Greg?
I know it's not very extensive. I don't know if the chief, if you want the chief to address that.
Chief's.
Chief?
Hey, chief.
Could you briefly just discuss the training process for a crossing guard?
As you know, chief, under the ordinance and under the Second Class Township Code, the responsibility for the hiring of the crossing guards will fall now to the school district. And the payment of the crossing guards will go to the school district as well. And as part of the ordinance and part of the statute, the local police department will participate in the training of the crossing guards and in the coordination between the police department and the crossing guards. In other words, giving them the contact information that they need if they need police help.
We have. The participation that this police department will take in is referencing them to the Bucks County Training Center or AAA to go get training.
Do you know how long that program is?
Nope. We are out of the business. We haven't sent anybody to training in years, and I, it's probably a couple of days.
So that's already a standard process that takes place?
It was already told to them.
You refer them to another location?
Mm-hmm. Is that it?
Thanks, chief.
That was easy.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Can I get a motion to adopt ordinance 755?
So.
Is there a second? Is there any question or comment from the public on the ordinance?
The time card is coming. But this is taking her now.
All right. Any others? All right. No more discussion, we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. All right. Moving on to number four, public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items, subject to five minutes and so on and so forth. Would anybody like to do public comment? Ms. Casario, please come on up.
So again, I'm Pam Casario, excuse me, and I live on Centennial Road. Two years ago, the project for the water problems in our neighborhood were supposed to be being taken care of by the developers of Newtown Court and Tall Oaks. With that, two basins were provided, one up at the top of the street near Tall Oaks on Newtown Road and one towards the bottom of our street. I have no idea how that's helping anybody because I'm in the middle, and it's not helping me. And I have, I actually have some emails that I sent two years ago when I was told, well, it's done, and let's see how it works. It's not, I'm here to tell you it's not working. And I'd like to know what the township, who promised me when I first, when I showed up at the zoning board and said, what's going to happen with the water problem that we've already overdeveloped? Not, that's biased. We've already developed the area that I moved into in '84 with Centennial Village, with expanding the high school.
That's right.
And with the two new projects, and now a third one, which is going to have. I really think that you need to look at this. At the moment, if I had to sell my home, I don't know how you could pass my home for sale. I don't have wet ground. I can't go out without boots. And now I can't go out in my front yard because there's puddles. There is a creek that runs behind our property between us and Majestic Oaks. My property goes out, stops, and I don't know how many feet there are, but quite a distance to where the creek is, and it drops down into the creek. It is not water rising up over the banks of the creek. I had water in my garage this year as well because the driveway in the front now floods so bad that when we really did have those terrible rainstorms, I now have a problem. And my neighbors do too.
I know we had discussion about this at a previous meeting, and we were supposed to send people out to survey the situation.
Yeah, I mean.
If it wasn't you that was here, one of your neighbors was here.
Right. Yes, I know.
Yeah, I believe the area is being discussed. I mean, we're involved in those projects. I mean, that's the low-lying area. I believe it's a flood plain, it sounds like.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Of course, Ms. Zimmerman told me that wasn't true. But yes, there was a time when Temple came out and we rejected their plan. It was a flood zone. And Warminster took the other plans, and I honestly do not remember the name of the corporation, and said they were the accurate ones and that I didn't live in a flood zone.
Okay, but there's a creek running through your property. Is that correct?
No, it runs behind my property.
It's behind your property.
A distance behind my property. It's not right up against.
But you're in the low area and everything's draining towards you?
Yes.
Okay. Has the problem become, is it better, same, or worse since the developments occurred?
Worse.
It's worse.
Because now I have it in my front yard as well as my backyard.
Okay. And when did that start occurring?
It started occurring seventeen and got worse over the last year. This is the first year I've had water in my garage, which, too, slows down.
So we can go ahead and take a look at that. I mean, there's a couple of things that bubble up the top of my head. You know, number one, it's, 2018 was one of the wettest years we've ever seen, so that's not going to help the problem. If you're in a low-lying area, water's going to flow there. Typically, when we do land development projects, they're responsible for meeting stormwater ordinances and regulations, which should improve the situation, but not necessarily solve it. You know, they're not responsible for stormwater. It has nothing to do with their property. I'm not saying that's the case or not the case here, but we can go ahead and take a look at it. I just don't, I don't want to make any promises.
Okay, it's a start, but I think you do have a responsibility because when I came to the zoning board, they said, no problem, your neighbor's down the end of the street got a lawyer, and it's going to be fine. And it's not fine. And I've had water, you're right, it's a low-lying area, but not like this. My children used to be able to play in their yard. My grandchildren used to be able to play in my backyard. They hadn't, they couldn't play the entire summer last year in the backyard because it never dried out.
We will take a look at it.
And our landscaper is, just sent me a letter saying that he does not believe he can do my backyard anymore because he got stuck twice last year. I don't think that's the average amount, even with the increase in water we had last year.
I would really like to have a look at this. I know we were supposed to take a look at this a month or so ago. And if the development up top is causing excess water to their property, while that development's going on, it's, that's when the right time for the board to intercede, not after they're gone.
We will take a look at it.
Yeah. So I'd really like to hear something back next month if possible.
I'll be back. Thank you.
We still can take action, Karen, after a development is already done if there's issues?
So the Tall Oaks development isn't closed out yet. So if there's anything that's related to that project, we would still have the opportunity to go under the current contract to get them to fix it. If it's related to that development.
And that's my question. If Tall Oaks is affecting their property by higher flow, we need to know now.
Yes, this would be a good time since the project's still open.
All right.
Okay.
So go out there.
Thank you.
We've got a couple complaints. Mark and I both live in the area, so we know what's happening with that, and so we can address it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, sir.
Tony Manoffo, I live on Ninth Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Wondering why we're having the municipal authority value? I don't get it. I think most of you were at a meeting last year at the high school where it was overwhelmingly rejected by the township residents. So I don't know why you would want to kind of backdoor this thing in. And don't we have anybody who can come up with a long-range plan to pay our debts rather than, oh, let's sell this asset off so that we can pay our debts? Doesn't make sense to me. This is something that's viable, that doesn't really cost us a lot of money, and it works. So that's my question.
Okay.
Why are we doing this?
Why are we doing, why I voted for it was because, a couple of reasons. One, last year, we rejected it, then we failed to increase taxes at the end of this year.
And why don't?
Because we failed to come to.
Is this the Republican mantra? We can't?
It was a bipartisan vote not to raise taxes.
We can't raise taxes? It's been the mantra for how many years now? Now the police are in debt. They're underfunded. Nobody wants to raise taxes.
I do, Mr. Manoffo.
Have a little.
I've supported it for two years.
Have a little moxie, you know? You worried about getting reelected? Is that what it is? It seems to be the thing, the going thing.
You know, I think one of the things that everything, everyone has to be aware of is there's evaluation going on. There's no doubt about that.
Right.
It does not mean a decision's been made.
Yeah, it's starting the ball rolling. Let's not, let's not, you know.
Well, if you, I don't know if you were at the last meeting when this was decided.
I was not here. I missed it.
If you get a chance, go on YouTube. I gave a presentation about the long-term fiscal issues that we have. And I laid out a number of potential options that could come out of evaluation, looking at other things, you know? And it could be a leaseback, it could be a sale, it could be tax increases.
But why does it have to be this asset?
We don't know that it has to be.
Okay.
But I, but trust me, this, the, the problem is, is large and at this point, I think it would be foolish to take anything off the table.
Okay.
So I'm not sitting here saying that that's the right thing to do to sell an asset. I'm just saying, don't discount it, don't say no to it. You have to look at all of your options.
So what's your other best solution?
There's gonna be a bunch of options presented once we have the data.
Well, what's your other best solution?
The other best solution?
Yes.
Well, I prefer to go ahead and gather ga, data and do an analysis before giving solutions.
Okay, okay. So you mean we don't have the, do we have the ability to borrow money?
Well, of course we have the ability to borrow money.
Okay, so we, we don't have people that can count, that can figure out over a long period of time how we can pay this down and keep paying into the funds that we need to pay into?
You're talking about borrowing for operational purposes? I would never recommend that.
Well, what are you gonna borrow for?
I didn't suggest borrowing. You did.
I did, yeah. Well, aren't you gonna borrow to pay into the policeman's pension fund?
No.
Why not?
You're talking about a pension obligation bond because then you're getting an arbitrage situation where you're basically trying to go ahead and beat the market. Right now, we're trying to get eight percent return on our pension, which we're not getting.
Right.
So if we borrowed, not only would be, we'd be, you know, have to hit the eight percent mark, we'd also have to hit the interest on top of that.
Of course.
So you're really trying to hit ten percent. You know, it's not a good situation to be in a pension obligation bond as a last-case scenario.
So when was the last time we put money into the police fund?
We put money into the fund every single year.
Okay, so how come we're underfunded then?
Because we've been using an unrealistic rate, rate of return of eight percent and using the smoothing method of calculation.
Okay.
Seventeen, we paid market value.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So I'll just, the people, people of the township don't want you to sell this asset. I hope that's clear to everybody. It was very clear at the meeting, so come up with something else.
I'm gonna come up with a whole bunch of options and the board's gonna do their analysis and then we'll come to some decision. But right now, my recommendation is not take anything off the table, look at all of your options, gather as much data information as possible, and make an informed decision.
Okay. So in other words, you're gonna sell it.
You're saying that. We're not saying that. You're saying that.
That's what it sounds like to me. Even the fact that you're getting it valued makes me think that, okay, this is the first step, then what's the next step? Not even say, "Who wants to buy it and how much?" And then what's the step after that?
Don't need to value to do that. I could go ahead and meet with a bunch of operators right now and get bids right now. I don't need to value for that. I need to value it to go ahead and present options.
Okay. But I haven't heard any, any of the other options. Give me an option. Just give me one. Right now, you have them. You told me you have them.
Stormwater and taxes.
What's the option?
Sell the sewer system. Sell the water system. Sell both systems. Lease the systems. One of the systems or both systems. Lease one or both of the systems back to the, the authority. Go ahead and increase taxes.
So it all involves them?
And go ahead and increase tax. Well, we're, some of the options do involve them, yes.
Okay. Then how come we haven't raised taxes?
Good question.
Why, how come we haven't done that?
Well, that's a choice that the board makes.
If we raise taxes incrementally over time-
Right.
People wouldn't be bothered. And if you said to them, "Here's what we're gonna do with the money."
Well, we also have a problem with a cap on the second, on the millage that we can charge.
And where are we?
Well, right now, we're three mils under that cap.
Okay.
But we, we need court approval to go above that cap from fourteen mils up to nineteen mils.
Right.
The budget that was proposed basically brought us up to almost that nineteen mil cap. So while it would've solved the problem over the next few years, it would not have likely been a long-term solution. So that cap is probably the biggest issue that we're faced with right now. And we're gonna, we're gonna bump up against the ability to, to tax.
So if it's gonna solve it for a few years, we couldn't go revisit it in the future and say, "Okay, here's what we need to do to keep this thing going. We can't do, we don't have the ability to do that?"
The board has expressed a desire to have a long-term solution.
Okay. So we're gonna get a pot of money from the municipal authority or whatever we're gonna get, then we don't have that asset anymore. We're gonna spend all that money and then where are we? And they're gonna raise rates, so you might as well just raise taxes instead of raising rates.
Again, there's a limit to where we can raise taxes.
I understand that, but there's no limit to how much they can raise the water once somebody else owns it. That's what, that's been the history in other places where they've gotten outside people to buy them. So you might as well just raise the taxes. At least we still have the asset.
Okay, but again, there's a limit to, a legal limit to how much you can raise taxes.
Right. And you can get an exemption.
No. The court can get you up to nineteen mils. Above that, there's no exemption.
Okay.
I, I just wanna emphasize, the problem here, I think, is larger than, than you realize. It's, it's not, it's not something-
It's something that goes back because-
Yeah.
We have, we've had a long-term issue with raising taxes.
If you get a second, go on YouTube.
I will.
Look at the last meeting. I gave a presentation that went through a lot of these things. I think we, we can probably have a better discussion if you did that.
Okay. But I think you guys heard the people last year. Don't do it. Who do you work for? Us. Okay, we don't work for you. You work for us. It's just like our federal government at this point. They don't know who they work for either. They forget who's paying the taxes. So, I, I'd say, thank you. So I hope you consider it. I think if you have another big meeting at the high school, you'll get the same kinda result.
Thank you.
And I'll look at your video.
Yep, thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. Hayes. Come on down.
Good evening, everyone. Ken Hayes, Eight Fifty Lingo Drive. We're gonna continue on the water theme. This Monday is the Environmental Advisory Council meeting. We are gonna do a presentation as part of our environmental education series. This one's entitled, "The Water We Drink." So we all know there's some issues with the drinking water around here, although our water is safe right now.
Thank you.
Let's be clear about that first. But we do know that there's some issues with the perfluorinated compounds, PFOS, PFO and PFOS. So I am going to, as a hydrogeologist, I will give a quick crash course with some nice visualizations, some nice visual files about groundwater flow and how groundwater moves, excuse me, with contaminants in it when influenced by pumping, just to give a people an idea of how things actually work underground. And, and then Tim Hagy will present what the municipal authority is doing to protect our water source and our drinking water supply. It's gonna be a great presentation. There's a lot of people to express interest and we're gonna have a representative from our new state senator, Maria Collette's staff, to tell us what's going on with the latest legislation. So I wanna make sure everyone, here's this, February twenty-fifth, this Monday, seven o'clock right here in this, in this room.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Any other comment from the public? Mr. Welsh.
Good evening, everybody. Bob Welsh, Howell Avenue, Warminster, PA. We got a letter two days ago from the water company involving, "They're gonna change the water meters." I think it is essential that the township identifies and marks the curb stops. If you take that water meter out and those valves don't hold, you're gonna have a major issue in your house. I ask you to go home tonight and look and see if you can find your curb box.
I have no idea, Mr. Welsh. I, I hear you.
So in my house, if that valve breaks and that water flows, I'm gonna lose my kitchen, my den, my utility room. It'd be a major, major problem. So I think it would be advantageous for the township to have them identified and marked. And even if they are identified and marked, if the contractor goes out there and tries to turn that valve that's been in there for forty years and hasn't been turned, that valve's not gonna like it. So, and you're not gonna like the results in your house. So it's just a suggestion and I think it should be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I've heard concerns from other residents with this exact same issue. In fact, I'm concerned in my own home because those valves are like as old as the house. They've never been touched, so I, I think that's a major concern. Is there any way we can address that, Mr. Schuster?
Well, that would fall under the authority. They're the ones who are doing the work. We can certainly express the concern over them and help get word out to the public or any education as, as required.
Well, I think what Mr. Welsh's point is, and I, and I tend to agree with him, they're gonna come in to change your meter. They're gonna shut your valve off inside your house.
Right.
If that fails and they don't know where your curb shut off is, water is gonna pour into your house for god knows how long. I mean, I understand exactly what your point is and I agree. I think they should identify where the curb shut offs are. I mean, perhaps we could communicate that.
Yeah.
How we have this great communication with the authority.
I, I can express that sentiment over to the authority, absolutely, yeah.
We received a letter in the mail, but it didn't go into that and that's the one thing that was glaring. As soon as we received the letter, some of the neighbors were saying something about it. My husband even said, "What's gonna happen if that belt is, if it starts, if the water starts flowing?" Like he said, "You don't have the curb shut off. People's homes are gonna be destroyed."
And you don't know where it is.
We don't know where it is, right. So how we can address those issues prior to them letting us know when they're gonna be doing the actual work. Thank you.
Any other additional comment? Mr. Housechild.
How you doing, guys? Dave Housechild, Maguire Lane, Warminster. As a member of the planning commission, I get a lot of questions about the leadle situation, be it friends, neighbors, residents, getting my hair cut, shopping, whatever. And I just have a, some quick facts that I wanna present to the public and I figured this was an excellent forum to do that. The approval schedule goes as, the hearing board relief was granted on October twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen. And with that, the next planning commission meeting, they'll be coming to us again for, I believe, the third time will be on March twelfth, twenty-nineteen. And the anticipated Board of Supervisors meeting, hopefully, will be March twenty-first, twenty-nineteen. I just looked at the description of the project. It's located at seven hundred York Road in the C-two zoning district. The site itself is nine point one-four-seven acres. Proposing this time is pad site one, which is the front left. Lidl is a twenty-nine-thousand eighty-nine square foot building. Pad two, which is the center, which is a parcel use of the existing building, a thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-eight square foot building. Pad site three, which is the front right, is proposed restaurant site in a six-thousand-eighty square foot building. It will have two underground stormwater basins and one rain garden. The previous proposal was originally one site for just Lidl. However, it was mentioned during the approval process that more pad sites could be added, so the original plan was tossed from twenty-sixteen. Here's the zoning information. Non-increase in the previous surf, impervious surface. Site is about seventy-four percent impervious. Decrease in the building coverage area. And third, is decrease in parking from four-hundred-and-twenty-nine spaces to three-hundred-and-ninety-three spaces. This is just some of the items that were drawn up. A quick list, what the public knew was going on, and I hope it answered some questions in the shopping center, so.
I saw somewhere online today that one of their engineers, in fact, that they're a year away from putting a shovel on the ground.
Yeah, I saw the same thing. Yeah, there.
But they're gonna come in through land development, right? I mean, I mean, it was staff now, correct?
Right, so that's, I think that's what he was saying.
Yes.
The next planning commission meeting, which is March twelfth.
March twelve, yes.
They would be coming in for a preliminary final. So they had received a preliminary final approval before an amended final, but they're changing the plan. So they have to come back before the planning commission, before the board for their new plan because they're having the three buildings instead of just the one.
Even when that process is completed a year away, that's still quite some time.
Right, so that, that becomes how long it takes them to meet their conditions of approval. So that becomes their timeline.
So we'll touch on it later, Mr. Schuster, so we can't, probably can't count on that building permit money and fees and things like that for two thousand.
Well, when I'm building, when constructing the budget, I don't count on anything like that. That stuff is above and, over and above what's expected, so we never know when it's coming back.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lewis.
I'm George Lewis, from Cheryl Drive. Cheryl Drive, I came home on Saturday night and there was twenty-two cars. Is there any reason why there's twenty-two cars in one block? It came to be as parking on one side of the street, whether it be north and south or east and west. There's plenty of parking. I took a ride last night. Snow emergency last night. No cars on the road. Where'd they go? There are places for cars. There are no cars on the road. I am sure I went down the Speedway and there probably no cars on the road. But tonight, there'll be cars over, over the road. So there should be, I know you can't even afford to sign, put the signs up properly that says, "No parking," but something should be done shortly because trucks, trash trucks, or even large cars, maybe the fire company, can't get through these roads with cars parked. They don't even park close to the curb. They park out. That's all.
Yeah, there, there is a, a process to go through if you wanna restrict parking on a road.
I know.
It just, you'd have to go ahead and do a traffic study on there and see if it meets them with the appropriate warrants, but it's always something we can look at if the, if the board would like.
Speaking of cars parking on the road, what's the latest with Rogers Road?
Haven't heard that in, in a while. The latest, we were, we were concerned that doing anything would actually push vehicles to another road. I believe in the conversations that were held with the, the management there, it wasn't the residents, correct? It was-
Um, I can't remember.
Okay, I believe it was visitors and not actually residents that were parking over there. So if the board wants to move forward and, and do the traffic study and, and look at it, I don't know if it would meet the conditions. It probably, my guess, it wouldn't, but we could certainly do that. But my fear is it would shift the problem from that road to another road.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, I, I received a correspondence from Mr. Hagy regarding the water meters where he said the meters will not be changed out if the water cannot be shut off. Valves will be checked by turning, turning off prior to removal of meters.
Okay.
And I'm sure, hopefully, Mr. Hagy's watching and he would get that officially out to us, but thank you.
So I, I guess I don't have to express the, the concern anymore to the authority.
I think you would anyway. I think you should anyway.
Maybe we could post something on the website, let people know, let folks know, because I know-
I'm gonna coordinate with the authority on whatever information. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put out information that's possibly different from what they're putting out, so I don't wanna coordinate with them.
It's not like to know where my shut off is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So once again, Ed Hoffman, Eight-O-One County Line Road. But I just wanna talk about the water shut offs and whatnot, right, and the meters. So I'm, I'm helping a friend, okay, reclaim his home and I don't know if you're aware of Saxton Manor. Are you familiar with Saxton Manor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you familiar that each unit has one meter and one main, okay, to fourteen units? Yeah, okay. And on top of it, that just happened. The meter just blew, okay? Nobody knew where the shut off was. Flooded two units, okay? So this is something that really needs to be addressed because each one of these units don't even have an individual shut off. You can't shut water off to any one of these units. Only one unit in the utility room has the ability to shut off the entire complex.
Wow.
Okay, I have a picture if you'd like to see it, too, okay? And only one unit, okay, in each one of these complexes, okay? Fourteen units per complex, okay, has one main and one shut off, okay, which is located in the utility room in one of those apartments. Which one it is, take a stab. You don't know. But you can't shut off the individual unit. So, and, and I wonder how many others are like that as well. I know I can tell you right now from my home, I can't even tell you where the main shut off is for mine. I have no idea. I know where it is in my house, but I have no idea where it is outside, okay? Nobody does. And I've looked, okay? As a firefighter, I've looked, okay? So, you know, it's not there. And if it is, it's either buried under dirt or hidden underground, okay, because it's been covered up over the years or whatnot and nobody knows, you know? Okay, 'cause normally if you look around in some of the other townships or some of the other areas, like some of the new developments, you'll see those green units, the green boxes-
Right.
-that are surface-mounted, okay, that actually have shut offs in there for gas or for water or for other things. And that's, but it doesn't exist in some of these areas, okay, especially the ones that have been built in seventies, sixties, and fifties. I can tell you it's not there, okay? So just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Any other comment from the public? Okay. Well, let's move on then to our consent agenda. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's consent agenda is as follows. Item A is approval of your minutes from your February seventh, two thousand nineteen meeting. Item B is approval of a stipulation agreement for a tax assessment appeal for Weiss Markets. As you're probably aware, when these appeals are undertaken, they're undertaken primarily by the school board. We just tagged along. The, the school board did settle and this would settle our end of that, that tax appeal. The school board did settle, and this would settle our end of that tax appeal. Item C is, I should say, C, D, and E are all related to the road program. Item C is the authorization to advertise the curb ramp installation contract for the road, 2019 road program. Item D is authorization to advertise the milling contract for the 2019 road program. And item E is authorize the advertisement for the hauling for that road program. Item F is to close out the escrow for 620 Jacksonville in the amount of $6,019.19, as recommended by the engineer. And item G is consider Warmminster Commerce LLC 450 York Road Maintenance Bond Release for $2,058.45 plus any accrued interest.
All right. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Senator.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Mr. Schuster? Any questions from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries four, nothing.
I just, I don't know why, I put the wrong note in here. Item F, I said as recommended by the engineer. That was not something that the engineer was involved in. That was an internal legal engineer, so, sorry about that.
So noted. We're now up to the financial report. I'd like to turn the microphone over to our treasurer, Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve transfers and bill lists for the period ending February 21st, 2019, in the amount of $1,261,069.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions? All right. Public? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries four, zero. We're up to the January financial statement.
Yep.
Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As it's the first month of the fiscal year, there's really nothing extraordinary to report. There's, it's too soon to see any trends or do any analysis. Obviously, as the year goes along, we're reporting on how things move along to budget. One thing I would like to point out, in the summary, it did talk about how there is a significant deficit in the sanitation fund. There's a reason for that. When you adopted the budget, you had not yet approved the contract and levy the new fee. So when the third month of the year expires, you're going to go ahead and, we're going to recommend that you go ahead and adjust that budget. The money coming in is going to be fine, that the fund is going to be fine, but there is showing a budgetary deficit, and that's the only reason. But that'll be fixed. There'll be enough money coming in to cover that.
Any questions for Mr. Schuster?
I just have a couple. I was going to address this while Mr. Manoffo was at the podium, but I didn't think that was the appropriate time, and I would imagine that this is. I know that at the last meeting, the board took action to do asset valuation for long-term planning, which in my opinion, long-term planning is the appropriate thing to do. But my concern is what are we doing about short-term planning? I mean, according to this year's budget, we're going to have a $2.3 million deficit. We have 2.5 roughly in fund balance. By September, October, we are going to be in fiscal crisis, and I just don't see any urgency. I mean, are we, are we going to discuss short-term planning, which will vis-à-vis mean, in my opinion, a substantial tax increase for 2020, substantial? And if there's going to be that discussion, I think we should be having it now and every month leading up to it, not hit the residents in November, December. By the way, you're going to get this huge increase. And I've had this discussion with the tax collector. When there is a huge increase in taxes, residents get hit with an escrow shortage from their mortgage company, which is, say, $250. But you have to pay double. And if I'm a resident of these new developments where the taxes are double what mine are, I would like to at least have these discussions that this might be happening to these people and be happening to me and to the other residents. I mean, I am all for long-term planning, believe me, but I don't see us discussing any short-term planning. I just don't, and I think we should be. I mean, I know we're going to see how your, the year we get taxes in in March and April, and everything's going to be great. By August, we're going to be chewing into our fund balance, and we're projecting huge deficits. And by not raising taxes last year, we didn't do anything to help it. We're not, we decided not to fully fund the pension in 18 and 19. That's certainly not going to help the MMO. I just think that we should be discussing short-term planning.
Okay.
Yeah, like I talked about a little bit, you know, we'll talk about two years, 2019 and 2020. For 2019, the ability to pass any kind of tax increase is passed, so there's nothing you can do on a, changing the mill rate. So the only tools at our disposal right now really is on the expenditure side and eating into our assets, our fund balance. On the expenditure side, what my plan is, is to continue using the smoothing method on the police pension. That would save about half a million dollars current, in the current fiscal year. Of course, there are long-term negative consequences, which you're all aware of, by not fully funding the pension. Also, on the expenditure side, we're holding off on hiring in certain positions. We're cutting back wherever we can, but we're pretty much at bare bones right now. Fund balance will be eaten into significantly this year. We also have over half a million dollars in the operating reserve, and you shouldn't be surprised if I come to you sometime in the middle of the year asking to transfer that operating reserve over to the general fund to help fund the operations. So that's really 2019, we have limited options. When it comes to 2020, and I'm going on the premise that any of these long-term plans, which we're working on right now, whether it involves a sale of an asset or some other kind of activity, is going to take a while and probably not going to be available for us immediately. So I would anticipate that the budget that I present to you for consideration for 2020 would have a significant tax increase similar to the one that I proposed for 2019.
Any other comments?
Well, thank you, Mr. Schuster. And I know you're going to do everything you can to cut expenditures, but I see a fiscal crisis looming in the short term here, and we're getting ready to do a lot of work in the park where we're responsible for short, for soft costs, and we're responsible for the outlay of cash until we get the money back in for, from the grants from the state and the county. But in the meantime, how are, you know, how are we going to fund that? And if we're not willing to do that, we need to put a stop to that immediately. And that's going to require the board acknowledging that we're going to have to increase millage to park and rec and debt service to cover that.
As you know, I've been trying to do this presentation about Warmminster Community Park for a couple of months now. We've been working through some grant issues. You know, when, when we do that presentation, which will hopefully be next month, you can certainly have that discussion, but you're absolutely right. There will be costs associated with that. There are going to be some debt costs, which are going to be mostly short-term over two or three years until we get the grant funding passed. But there's going to be some long-term operational costs as we expand that park, and there's more maintenance required, whether it be in materials or in labor.
And that's my point of short-term planning. I understand we're looking at long-range planning, but in the short term, I really think we need to be discussing where we're going to be by years end.
I believe every member of this board understands the urgency of this matter. We, as a group, majority voted against the tax increase and is asking for a long-term plan. I myself did not want a Band-Aid, did not want a short-term plan where we're going in three years have to be in the same boat we're in now. So we're looking for a long-term plan that's going to be beneficial to all of our residents. If down a few months, we realize we're going to be, facing a major financial crisis, everybody knows that, we do not want to go into bankruptcy. So we're looking for a long-term plan. Whatever needs to be done to keep us solvent, we as a board will have to do. And I just want the residents to understand, we do, we do understand how serious this is and the urgency of the matter.
Any other comment?
No, I'll just, I'll just add to say that I agree with Mr. McKee that a tax increase, a large tax increase will likely be required at the end of this year. I said so at the last meeting, I said so in the press, I'll say so now. And I'll discuss it at any future meeting if we wish to discuss. But yes, one of the ways forward will include a tax increase. I don't see any way around that, so. How we discuss it moving forward, I'm open to suggestions on what form that takes. But I'm, I don't want to sit here and make believe it's not happening. And I think, I speak for myself, but I would hope that we all realize that, that by putting this long-term plan together, we have committed ourselves to having to make that decision at the end of the year. So, just my opinion, so, all right. Moving on. New business, we have, well, unfinished business, we have no unfinished business. New business, consider appointment of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We did receive a letter recently from Ms. Deana Niles over on Hopwood Drive, who is interested in the citizen advisor position on the park board. I would like to go ahead and make a motion to nominate Ms. Niles for that position. Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any comment or question?
I'd just like to thank her for volunteering her time. I serve as liaison to that particular board, and anyone that volunteers on behalf of our township is a great asset, and I thank her for her service.
Thank you. No other comments? We'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Welcome to the park board, Ms. Niles. Moving on now to professional reports. Up first is the Township Manager's Report. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report in case you have any questions. Two things I'll point out. One, Mr. McKee already touched on, it's Warmminster Day. We're really excited to have that again this year, and do want to thank Mr. Cowie and Shopright for, for everything they've done and being the prime sponsor this year. They're continually doing more and more for the community, and I just hope everyone comes out to Warmminster Day in June and really has a, has a great time. And the second thing I'll point out is, you may have noticed as the chief was at the podium talking, there's a little something different on his uniform. The department has officially rolled out body cams. Body cams for officers are really no longer a luxury, they're becoming more of a requirement, and something which I think is going to increase the professionalism and, and abilities of our department. So I thank the chief for getting that going and rolling that out.
And Warmminster Day, too, we want to mention our good friends from Gilmore and Associates. I'm sure they're going to come up big for us again this year as well.
I'm sure they will now.
Kenner's not here. Mr. Kenner's not here, in fact. Karen, you can promise us even more, Mr. Kenner's not here tonight, so now's the time.
I believe we are actually already listed as a sponsor on the Parking Rec Facebook page, so we are committed to...
You can update any a little, though, if you'd like. Mr. Kenner's not here.
We do take Amex.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Schuster? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir. Slusser's report, Mr. Bartle.
Yes, thank you. As the board knows, I've handled a number of matters of it by way of explanation here this evening, many of which were included in my report. You also have a seven-page report dated last week to the, to the board from me, so I'll take any questions that you may have, answer anything you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Bartle?
I have a legal question.
Yes, sir.
If the chairman, if the, or the chairman, if the township ends up in Act 47, who is considered head of government?
That's a good question. I'd have to...
I think I can touch on...
Well, you might, because I, because I can't, so let me turn that over to you.
And I have read over the Stress Municipality Act and Act 47. It, it doesn't change the government. You're not going to, you know, have someone else come in here and take over. What you have is a state-appointed coordinator, who is typically not a state employee, but it's a consultant or someone they contract out with. They come in and assist you and work with you to put together a, a plan. You go through a process to adopt or modify this plan, but you have that plan. Once the plan is adopted, you have to go ahead and follow that plan. So the form of government doesn't change, your powers don't necessarily change, it's just, it's just your, if you're driving on the road, the guardrails just come in a lot quicker, and they tell you where to go. So if part of the plan is you have to adopt an ordinance that does X, Y, Z, you're going to do it, you know, the state's not going to do it for you, but you're going to have to do it because it's in the plan. That's, so it's not going to be as if someone comes over and actually takes over the government. That's not the structure of the plan.
So how does, how do we end up in Act 47? Who applies for it, or does the state, I mean, who?
Sure, there are...
Because I'm asking because I don't know, and I, and I think we should start educating ourselves, because your words, not mine, by the end of this year, we will fit three of the criteria for this.
Yeah, so what I'll do, first of all, let me send out the Act 47 guidelines to the board. There's a, DCD put out a nice guideline that talks everything through. So I'll go ahead and do that. But if you meet any one of the 11 criteria, there are certain ways that you can get into the program. One is certainly by application of the board. You can vote to go ahead and submit it. DCD, if circumstances warrant, can do it on their own. I believe there's also circumstances for creditors that are unpaid to go ahead and force it. If there are employees who are going unpaid, I think they have standing to go ahead and put that application in. So there's a number of ways that you can go in. The chief executive officer of a city can, can do it, which I don't believe applies to me. I believe that applies to a different form of government. So there, it's all in the guideline which I'll send. But someone has to make an application unless DCD steps in and does it themselves.
That was my question. I appreciate it.
Any other questions, Mr. Bartle? Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on to Engineers' Report. Ms. McNair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My written report should be in your packet tonight. The only update I was going to give was on the Lidl project, but as we already discussed that, I have no verbal report for you tonight unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. McNair? All right. You got off easy.
Bless you.
All right. That'll wrap up professional reports. We're going to move on to the Township Manager's announcement of upcoming agenda items. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said previously, we're going to try for Warmminster Community Park as long as we get the grant stuff worked out. The Recorder of Deeds will be here making a quick presentation. We hope to have an update on five ponds, on where they stand from last year and where they're going this year, some of the projects they have, and also touch on some of the things we want to move forward with, including a major irrigation project. You took action to continue the conditional use hearing on the fugue this evening, so that should be at the, the next meeting. The cell, conditional use hearing for cell towers would also be on, on the agenda, and hopefully, Lidl.
All right. Any questions?
Mr. Schuster, I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
On this upcoming meetings, I noticed that on the Planning Commission and the Economic Develop, I'm sorry, Advisory Township Facility Subcommittee, blah, 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 there's a few of them that have February dates. Are that, is that incorrect?
Uh...
Dates already passed.
Yeah, we can go ahead and update it. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yeah, I think what messed it up is neither one of those meetings actually occurred, the ones that have passed already. That Facilities Subcommittee meeting did not occur, nor did that Budget Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Schuster? Okay, thank you, sir. We have now reached the second round of public comment. Residents have another opportunity to comment, this time on any items. Is there any second round of public comment? Mr. Manoffo.
Who ensures these poor transit drivers got to pick up these big trucks?
Ah, Tony, you're, you're hitting all my spots tonight. You are.
Those poor guys. They look like they should be picked up by a machine.
Absolutely. You, you, Tony, I'm watching these guys come down my street the other day. I stopped them. I said, "You got to lift this thing over your head." So we come into the township building, Mr. Schuster and I look at the video from the November meeting. We asked, we call up Mascaro, "Hey, you told us you were going to put something automated on the back of these trucks."
Right.
Well, here we find out that they are.
Right?
That's what they've told us.
That's what they've told us.
They told us, yeah.
Because you're killing these poor guys.
Yeah, because those things, when they're loaded up, are really heavy. Even when you're just pulling them along, getting older, they're not that light.
I told them, "I'm going to get my buddies from the laborers' union on the phone immediately. Come pay you guys a visit." Yeah, that's, that's brutal. It's really. No, you're spot on.
I just noticed it because, I mean, I only, I only try and put one bag in there, which I load up in a 33, a 33-gallon can, so it's not too heavy.
They weigh a ton empty.
Yeah, you put those things on, and those guys got to get them.
They got to go up over their heads. Right.
It's heavy. But they're going to try and rectify that?
Yes.
That's what they've told us, yeah. They're, I have to point out, there's no specifications in the agreement or the bid that requires them to do that, but they have said they're going to do it. I think it just makes common sense if they want to protect their employees, and also it slows things down, so.
Absolutely.
It's just something that, to me, is common sense that they want to do. I don't think the solution they put in place is going to be fully automated or mechanized, but it's going to be something that would assist them.
Assist them. And that's what they told us at a time of award bid, that, yeah, we're going to put lift assist on the truck. Because I asked a specific question. How's this guy, these guys going to lift these things?
Okay.
My street, they were using two, two of the workers to lift some of the cans. They were so heavy.
I'll tell you, two of their trucks through the township, I have seen that they have.
Oh, really? I do that? Oh, good.
They're an orange, they're a yellow unit that's sitting on the right-hand side of the vehicle on the back. It looks like a, like a tooth, like a single tooth, right? But, the thing is, they're not using.
Well, that's on them if they don't. That's on them if they don't.
So what, so the people at home couldn't hear Mr. Hoffman. Well, Mr. Hoffman just said that there, he has seen a couple of the trucks outfitted with this device, and hopefully all the trucks will be outfitted. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And how long, we renewed a contract with them for how long?
Seven. The contract is for five years with an option for another two years.
Okay. Because I was wondering if we really need three trash days in Warmminster, that's another question. I know we have a trash day, a trash and recyclable day, and then we have a lawn and leaf day. And I lived in Philly for a long time. You had one day.
And I don't want to go, and I don't want to go back. I don't want to go back.
I appreciate having, it's a convenience, but is it necessary?
It is at an additional cost, and I, I think, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think when they weighed that, I don't think they want to decrease the level of service. That was already enjoyed by the residents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other additional comment at this time? Mr. Welsh.
Good evening. Bob Welsh, Charlotte Avenue, Warmminster, PA. Can we get an update on Steak and Shake? The only reason I, the only reason I ask is because I bought my wife a gift card for Valentine's Day, and it looks like I didn't get her anything, so I just wanted to get an update.
Let me, if I understand the question, you got your wife a Valentine's? Among other things, among other things.
The government can't help you there.
I spoke with the developer last week, and he said the insurance company cleared them to start the repair work, and it should be about five or six weeks.
I take it with a grain of salt, though, I mean.
Does she have a birthday coming up that you could use it for?
There is one in East Norton that you can go to. That's the same developer, actually.
There'll be a Wendy's soon, so you'll have more options.
Wendy's sooner.
Yeah.
Any, any other comment from the public? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to supervisor's comment. We're going to kick off with Ms. Frasquetor.
No comment, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McKee.
Yeah, before the next time we meet, it'll be St. Patrick's Day, so I want to wish all my fellow Irishmen and non-Irishmen a happy St. Patty's Day, and please, don't drink and drive. The chief doesn't want any extra unwanted guests, so please use an Uber. That's all I have.
Mr. McPhillies.
Yeah, I forgot this under announcements, but I wanted to thank everyone from the Warmminster Presbyterian Church for allowing me to meet with residents last week, use their hall. It went so well, they invited me back on March 13 to meet with residents, so if you